Mr. President.
Counselor Devlin.
Here.
Counselor Earls.
Present.
Counselor Argamond.
Here.
Counselor Junta.
Present.
Counselor Khan.
Present.
Counselor O'Brien.
Here.
Counselor Shan.
Present.
Counselor Tontar.
Here.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Zee.
Present.
Counselor Connell.
Present.
All present accounted for, Mr. President.
Good, and we have a schedule and a copy of the counsel's notes that's in the packet, called the packet. And we have committee assignments which I'm going to ask the clerk to read in the public records so people watch them. Contact we had an issue about a particular matter.
The council committee assignments for 2018 are as follows. Budget and finance. Chairperson Counselor Tontar and Counselor Zee and Counselor Khan. Joint Ed. Chairperson Junta and Counselor Khan and Counselor Tontar. Planning and development. Chairperson Argamond and Counselor Junta and Shan. Public utilities. Chairperson Zee and Counselor Shan and O'Brien. Neighborhood and city services. Chairperson Counselor O'Brien and Counselor Zee and Earl. Public safety. Chairperson Counselor Devlin and Counselors Junta and O'Brien. License and permits. Chairperson Earls and Counselors Devlin and Vogel. General government. Counselors Connell, Halliday and Vogel. Rules committee. Chairperson Vogel and Counselors Argamond and Earls. That's it, Mr. President.
Can I do late file items?
There are no late file items. There is one item that we're going to remove from the consent.
Would you like to receive and file those since they have communication numbers or so that we can clear them off our docket?
That's a good point. Thanks. Probably, certainly the schedule and the rules should be approved.
Can we do that tonight?
We can do that right now.
So moved.
If the President would allow me, we should probably read the meeting's dates into the record.
Yeah, I agree, so why don't we walk through that, but I don't think we need to read through all the copies.
I would agree. Thank you for that. So the meeting's schedule as proposed for 2018, each council meeting would start at 7:30 PM right here in City Council chambers. They are tonight, January 8th, followed by January 29th, followed by February 12th and February 26th, March 12th, March 26th, April 9th, April 30th, May 14th and May 29th, which is a Tuesday due to Memorial Day, June 11th and June 25th. July 9th is actually, should be July 16th, I'll follow the source of that, being in the middle of the month of one meeting that month. August 13th, August 27th, September 10th, September 24th, October 9th, which begins on Tuesday because it's Columbus Day, October 29th in November. We have also a Tuesday, November 13th, Veterans Day, which is on Sunday, is observed on Monday, the 12th, November 26th and December 10th. Mr. President, that is a meeting as I believe you wanted.
Yeah. Now, if counselors have any additional observations about the calendar that they'd like to raise in the coming fall or at a future date, we can change some of these dates with that notice as those dates approach.
Hopefully they'll back to July 16th. July 16th, in the middle of the month.
March 16th is amended to July 16th.
Second. And you said, all of the favor?
Aye.
I propose. The rules. I really do think that considering the reading of the rules, the members are generally familiar with them. We are going to put our rules at an organizational retreat in the next several weeks. I'm going to ask for you to respond to an email by sending out the dates and when you settle on the dates, I think we're going to take it up. In the interim, however, a legitimate motion to adopt the rules has been...
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All of the favor?
Aye.
I propose. Thank you. So next, you'll need files. It's time for public time.
Wait a second.
So you would motion to waive the laws to accept?
Yes.
Good, good. We can get to you in just a few minutes.
Two people are going to speak tonight. First, Chris Miller.
My name is Chris Miller. I'm the chair of the Tree Commission and this is Connie Preston. She's vice chair and treasurer, the most important part of the organization. We've come to speak in support of the requested cash, free cash to the Tree Commission to plant more trees. And we have, are very excited about the progress we've made in the past three years. We started out looking at a five-year plan and right now we're ahead of that. We planted 47 trees in 15, 55 in 16 and 70 this last year. Due to a lot of effort from a lot of people, you folks have been very, very helpful for us. We have other charitable organizations, trusts that have contributed, including the Friends of Newburyport Trees. We plan on planting 78 trees this spring and we hope to do another 50 or 70 in the fall. With the free cash, we'll be able to plant about 100. That's only 10 shy of what we took down last year. So my goal was, when I started a few years ago, was to get us up to par with the number of trees that are being taken down. So we're getting close. So if we could have that money, that would be great. Other organizations that have contributed, Connie, would you share some of those?
Sure, you mean from the other trusts and grants?
Yes.
Yeah, so we've received funds. So you may be familiar with Friends of Newburyport Trees, which is a charitable organization that a lot of our donations go through, so we've received some funds for that. We've also had funds from the Bromfield Trust, the Morale Trust, and I'm forgetting one. Thank you. Yes, the CPC.
So it's been a really, a group effort, which is exciting. It's, and we're, Friends of Newburyport Trees are planning a major fundraising event. Those funds go directly to the Tree Commission to manage the planting, purchase, planning and care of the trees. So please, say yes.
I second the notion.
Bob Manning.
Yeah, my name's Bob Manning. I'm here to seek an approval of a permit to have a road race, the Frigid Viper, on January 28th. This race is organized by Joppa Flats Running Club and the Newburyport Rotary. All the profits from the race last year went to the Newburyport Learning and Retirement Center and Nursing and Art Show. We plan on doing the same thing this year. We had submitted the permit, request for a permit early in December. I believe we have all the signatures and the insurance. We've been doing this with the Rotary for 25 years. We tried to simplify the course to eliminate any major traffic intersections. It's going to be run out of the Riverwalk Brewery and use the rail trail for two miles or five mile course.
Are there any questions, Counselors? Thank you. We're going to take that up following the news update. Thank you. And I guess Tontar, who is up here.
Thank you. Good evening, President Connell, members of the City Council, all public and those at home. I think the best way to start tonight is to talk about the weather events that have encircled our city and our state over the last several days. The recent freeze and blizzard has caused significant challenges to water sewer and highway departments. And I would like to express my sincerest thanks to Tony Fenari and Wayne Ambaral, who is Deputy Director of DPS, and for leading us a really strong citywide snow removal process. Would also like to recognize the crews led by Dan Lynch, the water crews. They have had a series of water main breaks, three last week, a couple before, and having to replace water mains in the conditions these crews are working in is really challenging. And so if you see them, please to express your thanks. They've worked very hard to repair in those difficult conditions. Plum Island presents its own set of unique challenges with the storm surge coming. This is a storm surge that we had never seen before that came from the marsh because it couldn't absorb the astronomical high tides with the huge chunks of ice causing flooding in areas of Plum Island that, you know, I haven't seen before in terms of a storm like this. We, the blizzard resulted in shutting down Plum Island access for several hours that afternoon. Many of you, you all received updates from me directly during the course of the storm. One of the biggest issues that we have on Plum Island right now is, besides the fact that we're reassessing in terms of the amount of erosion and damage that was done particularly out so off of reservation terrorists who could not get beach access and it was just too cold. But we will be doing that this week and pleased the weather is cooperating in terms of that vein. But the main issue that we're struggling with right now is the air vac system. We haven't, with the amount of flooding that has happened with the ice chunks, it's made a whole new level of problems that we haven't had to deal with with the air vac system before. The alarms and the apps and the integration with the SCADA system has made it much easier for the crews to be out there locating the low vacs that come through on their phones or through the commuter, computer system, sorry. But it's still incredibly challenging and that we're still experiencing significant low vacs throughout the island, a low vacuum pressure. The system needs to be at around 15 to 20 to run effectively and our system has been as low as seven during these deep freezes. But as of this afternoon, we were up to 13 and we're hoping that it, it holds at this point. But we still have these, you know, the valve pits that are in the road that are in areas of heavy frost, so they're not going to thaw out this week. So we're just working as hard as we can and we have seven, a team of, crew of seven now that is skilled in dealing with the air vac system, which is certainly a significant improvement to the two we had during 2015. So I certainly will keep you posted on how this is going, but again, we're monitoring this 24/7 and so far, so good. I would also like to recognize our fire chief and emergency management director, Chris LeClaire, as well as Marshall Murray and their teams who worked also diligently during the course of the blizzard and storm. There was several evacuations and relocations that had to occur on Plum Island, their road closures, managing emergency ops center, coordinating efforts with the state, and they worked closely with DPS throughout the storm. My thanks to our entire public safety team for, and DPS who did an exemplary job. I am pleased at this point that we'll begin working on, we have identified priority areas as you know through the Great Marsh Study that took place for a couple of years, and now with the Municipal Vulnerability Grant that we will begin working on next week, we will begin looking at developing action plans to look at some of these targeted areas that we need to be very concerned with, with sea level rise and storm surge. I know that, just related to weather, that there's been a lot of calls that have come in to City Hall and to Molly Edinburgh's office regarding trash. I know it was absolutely confusing because not only do you have a holiday, New Year's Day, so everything moves forward, then you have a storm and you cancel trash and everyone is confused. And Molly tried the best she did, the code red called that one out, they tried to explain it, but essentially it comes down to there is this curbside recycling notice that is placed on the website with numbers that, phone numbers that you can call for if you have additional questions. But essentially, in terms of recycling, I know that Ward 3 and 4 still have a lot of recycle bins out and over the next couple of days, they will catch up with those on Tuesday and Wednesday. Wednesday trash was missed last week and it's not going to be made up. They just couldn't because they can't collect two routes of trash in one truck. So I apologize for people who didn't get their trash picked up on Wednesday, but this, it just, because that was moved forward today, but again, there's, there's just not a lot we can do about that. So everything will be back to normal on Monday. Even though it's a holiday, there will be regularly trash scheduled through next week and we should get back on track. Get your trees out. If you haven't put your trees out, they're ready to collect and everything should get back on schedule. So just be patient. If you, there is the recycling center on Colby Farm Lane that is open a couple hours every day. Call for those hours and if you want to drop off your recycling, you can do that. And you can also talk to the recycling coordinator who, if you have an issue with a lot of trash, she'll be able to work with Mello to try and help your individual situation. So I appreciate everyone's patience as we deal with some of the trash and recycling issues that have occurred. I know many of you received emails from me, but we haven't had a chance to talk about this because there hasn't been a City Council meeting. But we are very, very, very pleased with the bids that came in for the general contractor on the garage. We received seven bids and the top four were below our expected costs by $300,000 to $400,000, which is really good news. So we have right now, Hery International, our owners' project manager is doing their due diligence and looking at the top two in particular low bids as we begin to vet those companies and determine who is, we're going to award the contract to, we're hoping to award the contract in two weeks. In that vein, we are also awaiting the final grading of the Fuel Old Fitness Factory site and that is close. Certainly the conditions of the weather impacted their ability to work through some of those conditions, but we anticipate that grading work to be finished hopefully this week and that we can schedule a date to close on the property with doing the development. We will be having a meeting with them this week to begin working out some of those pieces and I'll relay that information to you. Parking study, I mentioned, John Burke has finished his parking counts and the analysis of the parking piece, which was part of the comprehensive parking plan that we wanted him to look at regarding the garage. The last piece of that work, he's working with Richard Jones on the technology that's needed and other devices to operate the garage. Once that piece is finalized, his report will be completed. We anticipate receiving it within the next couple of weeks. We will vet the report internally and then we will invite him to a City Council or to meet with City Council, give you a report, send it to committee, do a City Council meeting where you can actually sit and work with him on the, what he presents in that report. We also are meeting with the MBR TA this week to finalize our operations lease. Terms of zoning, now that the master plan has been completed and adopted, thank you, City Councilors, our focus can now shift to the completing, completion of the zoning rewrite. We had a zoning advisory committee that had been meeting up until the point where we sort of stalled as we began to refocus on the master plan and now we would like to get that up and running to begin to complete the zoning rewrite. There is a list here, Andy Port, Jennifer Blanchett, Peter Benet, Catherine Newell Smith, Jared Egerman, Barry Connell or Designee, Bonnie Sontag, the Chair of the Planning Board, another Planning Board member, Ed Ramsdale, the Chair of the ZBA, and then another ZBA member. And certainly would look to the President to appoint a second counselor or yourself to be part of that zoning advisory committee. They will be responsible for vetting proposed zoning amendments, recommending periodic amendments to the zoning ordinances. They will be improving development standards, improving zoning and permit enforcement and improving the efficiency and coordination of all permit-related processes. So please get back to Andy Port as he confirms this and he'll be scheduling the first meeting. I am reaching out to all of you, to members of the community, anyone who can hear me, anyone who's listening to this on broadcast. We are desperately seeking two new members for the zoning board of appeals. In the eight years that I have been mayor, this has been the hardest, probably water and sewer too, one of the hardest boards to get people for. We're looking for people who have experience in development, construction, real estate, architecture, planning, land use, law, and we really need to fill these positions as soon as possible. So I'm asking for the council and community's help in locating two people who would be willing to serve on the zoning board of appeals. We're really in, we have a one woman who will be going out on maternity leave and so we're not going to be able to reach quorum and this is a real problem for people who come before the ZBA and we can't meet. So I'm asking, I really need, need your help and support on trying to fix that.
Do they need to be city residences?
It has to be a Newburyport resident, yes. Thank you for bringing that up, Counselor. Many of you have heard that we're, our waste contract expires the end of June with Mello. We have a one-year renewal option, not sure that makes sense. This was a joint contract with Amesbury and Merrimack, but it's really, economy of scale is not making any difference. We put out a limited RFP. The RFP came, came back with a 30%, 36% increase in the contract and so part of, one of the major reasons for this is because of what's happening in China. Some of you have probably heard about this, the China Sword, National Sword, where they instituted new regulations that went into effect January 1st, where they have essentially stopped taking any contaminated materials from the United States and this is a real problem. I understand Mello has units on site filled with root cycling stuff. Cancelo has stopped taking it. Factories are being built to contain all this material until they can figure out. So we have a major trash problem and a major recycling problem. So we will continue to work on this. It's going to be something that we have to talk about with the Mass Municipal Association, with the governor in terms of where we go from here. So just want you to be aware that we are working on this and it's a significant problem. Brown School, we had a very positive meeting with the Newburyport Affordable Housing Trust. They are working on some copy for us to include into a reissue of the RFP as we had talked about. We really need to do more affordable units in this building and we, you know, had to go back and relook at how we can accommodate youth services. This is a really challenging site, but we're waiting for that copy and then I know that the counselors we've been working with, Counselor Argamond and Counselor Zee, had like, would have requested that we do a community meeting before we issued the RFP to get additional input. So we will certainly set up that meeting as we're closer to finalizing the RFP and we also know exactly what we're putting out in the RFP. Waterfront Trust, NRA, very, very optimistic, positive email came through, a couple of them actually from the Chair of the NRA, Bob Uleek. He's pushing for this quarter for the work on the MOU and the amendments to the waterfront trust documents to be completed. So that is very, very encouraging news. So we're trying to schedule one more subcommittee meeting and then the full meeting with the city, the full NRA, the full waterfront trust, settlers, citizens for an open waterfront where we can begin to review those final drafts that are very, very close at this point. So that's encouraging news too. Anna Jakes Hospital Partnership did a wonderful job presenting last week. There was 100 people there, all with very positive comments. I won't spend much time talking about that tonight because they are here to present to the rest of the council who didn't have an opportunity to hear about this potential merger. Planning Office, we have made an offer and it was accepted by Gregory Jones, who will be the next senior project manager in the planning office and he will begin on January 22nd. He has municipal, regional and private sector experience as a planner and we look forward to him joining the planning team and hopefully he'll be available at your next meeting and I'll make a point of bringing him out to introduce you. And we had a big event last week and congratulations to the newly elected and reelected officials. It was, if I do say so myself, it was a wonderful event and an honor to have Governor Baker, Attorney General Healy and Secretary Jay Ash in attendance. And it takes tremendous amount of effort and coordination to organize an event like that. And I would like to give a very special recognition to Lois Honiger and to Glee Woodward and to the DPS staff, Mike Bartlett, Josh Martin and John Hewitt, who did an amazing job of coordinating this whole event. And finally, our extraordinary emcee, who is always so gracious, articulate and charming, Richard Jones. Thank you very much. I look forward to working with all of you over this next term. Questions?
One. So we now have seven, seven personnel that are trained for the vacuum system. Based on your emails, when there's a big storm like over the weekend, it's all hands on deck, but normally how many are on you?
Two.
Five, five rotating.
And they work in other departments, but they've been trained so they can be polled. And it's, you know, unfortunate because they really should be plowing, but, you know, when the system's going down, we need, we need them out there. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
We have a special presentation we're going to make by Mark Goldstein, President of SCIO, Anna Jakes Hospital. He's going to make a presentation about the new arrangements, the new partnerships that the hospital is engaging in. Some of you actually testified and others, like myself, attended the meeting that we scheduled to be at night. The requirement for the regulation against, we're going to be able to vote some changes. And Mark is asked for an opportunity to speak and then answer your questions. Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thanks to all the council for having me here today. This is a very complicated issue to try to present in a forum like this. You can imagine our Board of Trustees has spent the last almost year evaluating, analyzing and thinking about the future of our community hospitals. And we stand here today in an absolute marvelous position, really based on years and years and frankly decades of tremendous service from our nurses, our physicians and all of our clinicians at Anna Jakes, including all of our employees, really positioning Anna Jakes in a very unique opportunity to join an incredibly new healthcare system being formed. I'll get into some details on it. I won't, I'm not going to have the opportunity to go into too much detail because this is actually a 50-slide presentation that I'm cutting down to about five or six slides to try to give you a little bit of insight into what we were thinking about and really reflecting on healthcare costs and what the system is focusing on. See if this is going to work. As I try to figure this out, I'd like to introduce Danielle Perry, our Vice President of Business Development, and Kevin Kilde, our Chief Financial Officer. At the hospital, has put a lot of effort into this. So for Anna Jakes, we're coming off of one of the greatest decades of our hospital. From 2006 to 2016, we've invested almost $60 million in our campus. Actually, it made me reflect a little bit. It was seven or eight, it was about eight, it was in 2008 when I sat here in front of this council talking about Anna Jakes Hospital with Delia O'Connor, our terrific CEO that really led the turnaround of our hospital. And we were talking about a new access road off of Low Street, Wallace-Bashaw, and a terrific new building in Kansas Center, and we talked to you about those plans. So this is actually kind of a neat reflection for me to think about what we've actually done. So for us, the best decade in our history was about a break-even operation over that 12-year period. We were able to generate value and put $60 million into our campus and a significant portion of that was really through the generosity of our community and all the support that we got through philanthropy. And the fundamentals really, and I think everybody in this room that has health insurance certainly recognizes, this chart here is a, is a chart that shows what's happened with healthcare spending as a percentage of GDP in the nation. And every one of us knows we're seeing double-digit increases in our health insurance. The overall costs are not sustainable. Anna Jakes Hospital is one of the oldest hospitals in the state of Massachusetts. When I started in healthcare in the mid-'80s, there were over 110 hospitals in Massachusetts. vote, some changes. And Mark is asked for an opportunity to speak and then answer your question. That conclusion is Mark.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thanks to all the council for having me here today. This is a very complicated issue to try to present in a forum like this. You can imagine our Board of Trustees has spent the last almost year evaluating, analyzing, and thinking about the future of our community hospitals. And we stand here today in an absolute marvelous position, really based on years and years, and frankly, decades of tremendous service from our nurses, our physicians, and all of our clinicians at Anna Jakes, including all of our employees, really positioning Anna Jakes in a very unique opportunity to join an incredibly new healthcare system being formed. I'll get into some details on it. I won't, I'm not going to have the opportunity to go into too much detail because this is actually a 50-slide presentation that I'm cutting down to about five or six slides to try to give you a little bit of insight into what we were thinking about and really reflecting on healthcare costs and what the system is focusing on. See if this is going to work. As I try to figure this out, I'd like to introduce Danielle Perry, our Vice President of Business Development, and Kevin Kilde, our Chief Financial Officer. The hospital has put a lot of effort into this. So for Anna Jakes, we're coming off of one of the greatest decades of our hospital. From 2006 to 2016, we've invested almost $60 million in our campus. Actually, it made me reflect a little bit. It was seven or eight, it was about eight, it was in 2008 when I sat here in front of this council talking about Anna Jakes Hospital with Delia O'Connor, our terrific CEO that really led the turnaround of our hospital. And we were talking about a new access road off of Low Street, Wallace-Bashaw, and a terrific new building in Cancer Center, and we talked to you about those plans. So this is actually kind of a neat reflection for me to think about what we've actually done. So for us, the best decade in our history was about a break-even operation over that 12-year period. We were able to generate value and put $60 million into our campus, and a significant portion of that was really through the generosity of our community and all the support that we got through philanthropy. And the fundamentals, really, and I think everybody in this room that has health insurance certainly recognizes, this chart here is a chart that shows what's happened with healthcare spending as a percentage of GDP in the nation. And every one of us knows we're seeing double-digit increases in our health insurance. The overall costs are not sustainable. Anna Jakes Hospital is one of the oldest hospitals in the state of Massachusetts. When I started in healthcare in the mid-'80s, there were over 110 hospitals in Massachusetts. We sit today at 63. And I was thinking a little bit about Essex County and the hospitals that have transitioned out, like JB Thomas, the Cable, Amesbury Hospital, the Hunt Hospital, to name a few. And the small government-owned hospitals and the small community hospitals have really gone away, and Newburyport has really embraced our hospital. And as we look at continuing healthcare cost rising, there wasn't really a real opportunity to vision out, not two, three, four, five years, but five, 10, 15 years going into the next decade and century, what healthcare would look like in our community and the role healthcare plays in our community, not only for the hospital, but all the small business and entrepreneurs that we support. So as healthcare costs continue to rise, it was evident to us that federal government and state government were not going to be able to afford to put more into local community healthcare, and that being part of a larger system was something that we thought we were really strategically positioned for. So for us, in the nation, when you look at the nation and you see the top, Massachusetts is the second highest cost state for healthcare in the nation. Washington DC was number one. We were number two, right behind them. So when we think about government payers, for us, 60% of our business comes from the federal government. We knew we couldn't rely on that. So we were minding our business, working hard at creating value in our local community, working on little strategic initiatives to grow our business lines, add practices in Amesbury and Haverhill. We've built a new building in Haverhill that will actually have an opening this week for, to celebrate that healthcare opportunity for that community. And our partners that we developed seven years ago were Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center, our clinical affiliation, to help strengthen our local community care, building programs in our cancer center and in our breast center, looking at opportunities to increase service in our stroke program, maternal fetal medicine, to name a few. Looking at how we could develop a tighter clinical relationship with Beth Israel led us to this opportunity that just started forming. We are one of five hospital systems, creating this new healthcare venture. Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center and its affiliated hospitals is one system. Lahey Health and its Burlington campus, and its two community hospitals, Mount Auburn Hospital in Cambridge, New England Baptist Hospital in Anna Jakes. We are one of five founding members to be able to help develop and create a larger healthcare system. At our public hearing, we had the opportunity to go into a little detail around some of the strategic elements of it, and I think overall, tremendous amount of support. When we built this concept, and we were on the ground floor building it, it created an opportunity for us to hold public hearings and meetings at the hospital. We've had over 25 individual group sessions to try to explain through some of the strategic elements of it, and I want to talk about a few of those. So together, the new company that is building this, and by the way, all five systems are going into this, giving up all of their complete independence to try to create what will be a large value opportunity. And when we did that, we sat around and we thought through, what are some of the key elements of creating a value proposition? And for us, with the system, we came out with this concept, and having the patient at the center of all of our decision-making across all of eastern Massachusetts. And I'll show you a slide that will kind of show you the demographics of what kind of a system will be part of. And really, supporting the values of independent and private physicians. It's not one model fits all when you look at a system of this size. For us, having a community hospital center, seven of the 11 hospitals in this five system creation are community hospitals. It's the fundamental value proposition, creating a low-cost model in the community with the idea of reducing and helping create a better value proposition on healthcare. We believe that we should be able to reduce and create products that are going to allow for health insurance premiums to be reduced across the entire Commonwealth with some limited networks and some new offerings that will come out as this network gets developed. But not only do we have a community hospital setting, we have some of the greatest academic Harvard teaching hospital in Boston. We have the academic site, the New England Baptist, that we can learn from and bring concepts to our community. It brings in expertise from the Tufts Center as it relates to their clinical teaching program with Lahey Health. So we have a system that has academic and community-based care. And we really have, we don't want to just do this in a way that is going to just be around the edges. We want this to be transformative. We want this to make a big difference in Massachusetts healthcare, creating competition to some higher-cost networks that offer wonderful care but at a higher cost. This network will be 30 to 40% lower cost than some of the competition in the marketplace. The one piece for us that, in a small community hospital, we like to believe we're very nimble, and we can make decisions locally that are in the best interest of our community. And the value proposition that we've been able to create with this network is really to maintain that attractive and supportive environment for physicians, professionals, and all of staff. And we believe that we're set up in the right way with our local governance. Our Board of Trustees will remain intact. We'll get to offer our community physicians that are employed by the hospital, the model that they have, the entrepreneurs that are private practice physicians are going to grow and thrive under this offering, not in competition with, but real partnership. And lastly, and most importantly, for the future of healthcare, we're going to get to participate in research and really educating the next generation of caregivers as part of our new network. How that works out locally in Newburyport hasn't all been determined. As you can imagine, this is going to end up being a $5.5 billion system. By the way, it's about half the size of the Partners Healthcare System. But for us, we're $150 million operation, joining and partnering in on the ground floor with a, what will be about a $5.5 billion company. So for us, and when you put a presentation like this for our Board of Trustees, you've got to rally, you have to really think about the rationale behind it. You know, can you make it on your own independently? The answer to that is yes. We could have stayed around, hospitals, I always say, hospitals die slow deaths. If you look at the hospitals around the Commonwealth that might have had financial struggles over a long period of time, it takes a lot to really put a hospital out of business. But for us, that wasn't what we were trying to achieve. We wanted to have comprehensive healthcare locally. That wasn't just to survive, but really to thrive. And I'll tell you, at the public hearing, I was so thrilled to hear so many people talk about how can we thrive as a community. People aren't going to just stay local to support Anna Jakes because they feel good about us. They're going to support us because they value what we have to offer. And as a low-cost hospital, and as a high-quality hospital, our hospital, actually, your hospital, we are a community asset today, governed by our community. In our new model, we will be a community asset of Newburyport governed by our residents of Newburyport. And what I find, one of the most important things, is how our network is distributed. You know, we go from the Cape all the way down to Newburyport in southern New Hampshire, and we loop around all the way down 128. It's a very distributed network. It's not a lot of competition locally. The markets complement each other. I'll show you a slide that really depicts that. For us, and for our network to be successful, we have to do a much better job keeping patients in the community at low-cost organizations. And as we develop programs and service lines, like what we've shown we can do with Beth Israel and our cancer center, it really gives us an opportunity to do more locally than we've ever done before. And the track record of Beth Israel as a separate organization and Lahey as a separate organization have a proven track record of this success with their affiliated hospitals. So we look at this as a tremendous opportunity to bring more bandwidth right here to Newburyport. I touched a little bit about products and the market, and I want to underscore this because, as that first slide showed, healthcare costs continue to grow. If we can create a network that offers the high-level academic teaching hospitals, Lahey, Boston, Beth Israel Deaconess, the New England Baptist, for services that we can provide locally, and we can create a product not just for our community in Essex County, but across Massachusetts. And if we can do that in a way that tightens up our service lines, it's going to reduce overall healthcare premiums significantly. We believe that there could be a 15 to 20% reduction in products offered very successfully in the Commonwealth by Blue Cross, Tops Harvard Pillroom, that will leverage this broad network that can really make a difference in healthcare costs. I think in a small business, and I know several of you are in a small business, it's so difficult to keep up with all the technology and the compliance and requirements. Creating scale and size for us, we believe will have a significant impact on the overall financial cost of doing business than we will ever have before. Some of our purchasing contracts in this large network will be able to reduce our overall costs purchasing. We're the only hospital in this network that is not self-insured for health insurance for our own employees. We have a premium model. We're excited about the potential opportunity of reducing our own healthcare costs. We introduced a plan this year that saved us 15% by creating a high-cost network and a low-cost network. So there are ways to do this, and I think there are real proven ways to do it. Next slide, Danielle. This slide's kind of complicated, but it's actually pretty simple. Every one of the dots on this slide represent a community in Massachusetts and in eastern Massachusetts that sent, the blue dots are sent at least 10 patients to Beth Israel, and the green dots sent at least 10 patients to Lahey. And as you can see in the graphics, there's not, there's a lot of synergy and not a lot of overlap in competition amongst the major academic sites. And this, there are 4.8 million people that live in eastern Massachusetts. The primary care physicians that we work with will cover about 1.3 million of them. There'll be a primary care office within five miles of 75% of the people that live in eastern Massachusetts from an entire network perspective. This is a very exciting opportunity to create these health plans. For us, next slide, Danielle. Yep. I took out a lot of the other detailed slides because I wanted to make sure I left an opportunity to answer specific questions that any of the council has. We are going to be doing more detailed presentations in about an hour format that we've been able to do before. I do want to comment before I open it up to questions on a couple of procedural things that are going to happen, so you're informed on that. So this process will be, Danielle, you can now get back to your seat. Thank you so much. Did a great job. The part of the process that we're in right now, and that we finished up the other night, was the determination of need, public forum. There were two other public forums, one in Boston and one in Gloucester. Senator Ives requested this one in Newburyport. And that closes out that part of the process. The Health Policy Commission is an agency, it's a semi-private agency, doesn't report into the Health and Human Services at, in the Commonwealth, and it's kind of an independent watchdog to review healthcare costs in these kinds of transactions. And our process has just kicked off with them. That process will last about anywhere with around nine months or so. It could be stretched a little longer. The Department of Public Health is looking at the application right now to make a determination on the application. That will happen co-terminus with that, and then the federal government and local attorney general will look at it from a public trade component and competition. We expect the process to work its way through. The whole thing should take about a year. And then for us, not only do we have local governance of a local Board of Trustees, but we also have corporators, and actually, there are some in the room tonight. We have 300 corporators of Anna Jakes Hospital. The corporators voted unanimously, which was an amazing feat, to get ahold of 300 corporators to be present or to vote, but over two-thirds of our corporators needed to be, to vote, and we had a unanimous vote of our corporators to support the transaction. Of course, they had a lot of detail on it also. We've had great success in the community talking about what this means for Newburyport, and have this great opportunity tonight to answer some questions by you.
Good time.
Thank you. I told you I'd do it in 15 minutes.
Are there questions from the council?
Just a brief question. I appreciate the process because that was actually my top. Is there any city involvement in the process, or it's essentially state and federal? Is there anything essentially that would come before us or occur at the local level?
From a regulatory standpoint, no.
Any sort of approval or anything like that? I don't think there is, but I'm asking you.
Yeah, I don't believe so because we're not changing our hospital license. We're not changing our tax-exempt status. Our hospital foundation that does the fundraising will remain the foundation. All our donations will remain local, only for Anna Jakes Hospital. So regulatory-wise, no. I think the reason why I wanted to come today on the invitation was to be able to talk about it and make sure that we can answer questions and make sure. There was a wonderful question the other night around, well, are we going to lose services? No, the intention of building the system is to add more to our community. We don't envision streamlining what we have to offer in our community. We want to bring more. The whole value proposition is to create a lower healthcare cost, and community hospitals like Anna Jakes are part of the solution. So regulatory-wise, there's nothing, I believe, that needs to be done.
Okay.
Other questions, Counselor O'Brien?
Yeah, I'm sorry I couldn't make the meeting last week. Yeah, the state regulatory process is focused on consumers on a state basis, and I understand what you're saying about services to new reporters, but from the selfish standpoint of Newburyport economic development, I mean, just very bluntly, is it, are you comfortable that Lahey Clinic is not acquiring control to close you?
Oh, thank you very much for that question. You have to know that Lahey Clinic, which is Burlington, so I think you might have meant Lahey Health as their system, they are going into this just like we are. They're the same, their Board of Trustees at their organization, I'm sure they have those same questions about Beth Israel or, you know, New England Baptist or Mount Auburn. Hospitals don't die slow, inexpensive deaths. It is very costly to try to close a hospital down, and there are regulatory protections for that within the statute. So, no, there is no aspect of that. The idea and strategy that will be presented in the public, at the Health Policy Commission is about growth and driving services. The track record of Lahey in particular, with what they've been able to accomplish with Beverly, Addison-Gilbert, and Winchester, is about putting patients into those communities. That's a proven track record. So no, Anna Jakes, they're looking at this region and what we can do for the new network as being frankly, a big growth opportunity. You know, it's hard to predict how it all shakes out. That's going to, we're going to have to work really hard at that, but we fully expect to add employees to our hospital, expand right now as part of the new network and processes. We're in the process of expanding our operating room at the hospital because we're so busy. We're going to add two additional ORs. That will come here, well, you know what, I'm not sure of the process. If it comes here, or a planning board, or zoning board, I guess I'll deal with Mr. Porter on that at the right time. But we'll be looking for permits to grow and add to our footprint.
Okay.
Counselor O'Brien? Yes, what services don't have now will be brought forward in this concept because, you know, I've lived here 71 years, I've been very happy with Anna Jakes Hospital, and the services you've offered to the residents of Newburyport. So what additional services might be offered later on, that aren't there now?
But I have a wish list a mile long, so, but it would be, I can't guarantee what services will be added, but I can tell you a couple of things. In our seven years working with Beth Israel, the programs that we've been able to add in our community for the benefit of our community is overwhelming, actually. The cancer center, we're going to be adding a third doc to the cancer center. We used to have one. We've been able to add a breast center. About 60 women a month get to have their high-risk ultrasounds right in Newburyport when Dr. O'Brien, the chief of maternal fetal medicine, comes up from Boston to see patients at our hospital, so they don't travel in. at our hospital, so they don't travel in. Dr. Gandaharin, who's the chief of thoracic surgery, and his associate come to Newburyport twice a month in our cancer center to see thoracic patients that needed surgery in Boston, but were coming from this area. We, we think we have tremendous opportunities in services like vascular surgery, which we don't offer today in our market or our community. We just don't offer vascular surgery here. That will be one we'd love to see an opportunity. We believe we're going to get to expand primary care services and add more primary care to the market. We've done it in Haverhill and Amesbury with Beth Israel called Beth Israel Healthcare. Those are some examples of what we've been able to accomplish, but I really feel like if we're able to keep a patient in Newburyport versus having to go to Boston, aside from all of the logistical issues, the cost of delivering care in the community is close to 50% less than it is in Boston. So the fundamentals are there for great success. We're going to have to earn that, and we're going to have to build that. So I don't have specific services today, but we certainly think a lot about it.
Some other hands that came up.
I just have two other ones. So you mentioned employees. So I assume that one of the goals with the, you know, bringing all these together is to combine some back-office operations, I would assume, things like claim processing and insurance and billing. Are those things that are done in Newburyport today? Do you expect those to stay in Newburyport, will each hospital, or is it going to get all centralized in a huge, I know, you know, for example, Partners, they have a large, I think they have a large office in Somerville or something where they do a lot of this back-office stuff. Just from a Newburyport perspective, I'm trying to understand, where's the, where is the future of that? Bringing in more clinicians, it sounds like, but how about kind of the back-office operations?
Yeah, I think it's a terrific question, and it's one our employees ask us all the time. And it's, it's hard to predict out what the, you know, that far out, what it would look like, but I always liked when, when the Partners example comes up. It took Partners 20 years to build that building and consolidate some of its back-office operations. Anna Jakes Hospital is one of the lowest-cost hospitals in the state, so our cost structure is a low-cost structure. That's not strategically developed. That's, we have some of the lowest reimbursement rates on the commercial insurance side. So we've gotten really good at being very efficient. We don't envision radical employee changes like that. I do believe, and I hope, that we can find efficiencies like human resources, but not to do away with our human resource operations, but to take parts of it, like benefits, management, and other functions that, that either we can do at a more cost-effective basis. For how we run our business and for the way we operate, we don't believe there's going to be radical changes, and I feel very confident that I can stand in front of our employees. There are no plans in place for radical changes like that. There are work groups in place right now that are planning integration, we call it. There are 30 integration teams we're participating in, many of them, to try to figure out, well, where are the efficiencies? How do you bring, the, the challenge is information technology. We're all in different information technology systems. It costs Partners a billion dollars to convert to their Epic system and make that conversion, and it's terrific here. I, I, you brought up Partners as kind of a concept. I would love to be in position to have one IT system for an entire network like this, but there have been so many millions, hundreds of millions of dollars invested in Leahy's system, which is Epic, in Beth Israel, which is different. We have four community hospitals on Meditech. To try to do all of this integration, it's going to be a lot of effort for that. So I don't think you're going to see radical changes that way.
So my last question is, do you see the, the new organization focusing on certain insurance companies in Massachusetts, like building with Harvard Pilgrim and Tufts versus, I mean, it seems like there's, there's starting to be an alignment with the different systems with specific insurances. Does Anna Jakes will still have fairly decent access for those with all insurances? In other words, is this a play and say, okay, let's go to Harvard and Tufts, Harvard Pilgrim and Tufts and do the low-cost, high-cost tiering with them and then kind of shun Blue Cross a little bit, for example? I mean, there's a little bit of that happening. I wonder if, you know, basically, my, the core of my question is access for those with a wide variety of insurances. You know, we have maybe 10 or 20 in the state that are of consequence, that they all be accepted or continue to be accepted.
It's a very thoughtful question, and for, it's kind of a two-part question, really. For Anna Jakes Hospital, we will participate in all of the contracts in Massachusetts. There isn't a contract that will present to us that we're not going to participate in. Developing an insurance product for, to be sold to the Commonwealth, I could see our new company negotiating not with all of them. Maybe they will, that hasn't really been determined, but there will be an offering that the consumer can purchase, but not, it won't affect if they can use Anna Jakes or not.
Okay.
Did that, was that a answer to that?
Yeah, I mean, it was maybe a 40,000-foot question. It's a tough one. It's just, it seems to be that there's an alignment happening between different insurances and different systems as those, as they, I, my, the core of my question is, everybody has different insurance these days. Some have Blue Cross, some have Harvard, some are coming from out of state, have United, I mean, CBS just bought Aetna for, you know, a huge sum of money. So there are these things that are moving, they kind of feel like tectonic plates, but all I'm asking for is access, really, is that people be able to use Anna Jakes, you know, with a wide variety of insurances.
So one of the neat things about Anna Jakes is that, maybe you know or you don't know, is we have some of the highest quality ratings and some of the lowest reimbursement on the commercial insurance. So whatever, for our organization, no, by the way, not all 11 hospitals in our system are classified as the tier-one best-rated hospital as it relates to these tiering networks. So it does cost more money to go to some network hospitals because their prices are higher. So for us, we're in the top tier, and it's not just cost, it's cost and quality. So I envision us taking advantage of that and being able to attract more patients locally for that. And I really feel confident to tell you that there will never be a patient denied access at Anna Jakes because of the insurance they carry. That just wouldn't be the model.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
One more question.
Can I circle back to Council Augment's question?
Yep.
And I think a lot of people in the community would be concerned that someone outside the community in the future would make a decision based on cost efficiency to close down Anna Jakes. I, you know, I understand, I interpreted your answer to Council Augment to be that the market is such that that's unlikely to happen, plus their licensing restrictions that would occur, but, but help me out here. Is there going to be an entity that is overarching in this network that could make that decision? Because I thought, I heard you say last week that the Anna Jakes would still maintain a lot of autonomy within this larger system.
With the appropriate intersects to the system. That is correct. I did say that, Councilor, and that is true. So we'll have a local board, like we do today. Our entire local board will, when the new system gets created, will graduate into the system. So our local governance will be done locally. There are intersects to this new, our new parent corporation, just like all the others hospitals have in the system. When it gets to closing a hospital, so for Anna Jakes, we are, the attorney general oversees the hospital as a chair, and there are very strict, prudent rules on how a hospital closes. And we are, as part of our agreement, we are a full-service community hospital. So the, to shun services out, it just doesn't happen that way. You can't just do that. The new company can't sit back and say, oh, you're going to lose this or we're going to close that. It doesn't, this is a local community asset. I would need my lawyer to give you the exact answer to that question on what the regulatory process is, but it, that, that is a, something I, I can, I can see why the question comes up. And 20 years from now, under the circumstances, I don't know how that all plays out. That's just a hard thing to really visualize, but I know that we are locally governed. The decision to run Anna Jakes Hospital, our business, and our business plan gets approved by our board, it does go up to a parent board under the circumstance, like everybody else, but from a closure standpoint, the regulatory agencies in the state would oversee anything that would ever happen. It couldn't just be, close the hospital, business-wise, from, for business strategy reasons. It would have to be financial distress, there's a variety of characteristics that qualify a hospital for that kind of.
A little familiar with that because it's also true of colleges, universities. We're chartered with not-for-profit, and we are overseen by, you know, such regulations.
Right. I mean, that was a big concern of the board of trustees of the Anna Jakes. I have to, there was a lot of discussion about that. We've gotten the assurances around what our vision needs to look like. And by the way, as an independent hospital, trying to make it on your own, you have the same guarantees. As a matter of fact, I believe that if you think about this network and the opportunity that it presents, it puts us in a footing with a lot of strategic growth and capital and liberates us from the constraints that we have with our bank and our bondholders. It, it gives us a much greater chance for success, but in the end, it's going to be about quality, safety, patient satisfaction. Those are the three things that we're focused on to drive our community and make our offerings. And, you know, the closing thing is a real valid question and one, I think, we all have to be, you know, in the back of our minds, always, no doubt about it.
Thank you.
If there are other questions, Councilors, I want to thank you for coming out tonight for offering to share this information with us. I'm hoping that people will watch it from now on. Also, there is something, I have a question, I may, awkward question from the chair, and that is, how many people in the community who have questions get those, get answers to the questions that they have? What's the best avenue for them to pursue?
I'm going to dodge that question and ask our Vice President of Marketing and Business Development, if you can come up with a deal.
So we're kind of in the beginning of the process regulatory-wise, but for community education, that's going to continue for the next year at least, if not longer. So we're setting up a variety of ways to communicate with the community. This is among the first. We're excited to do more forums and invite people here.
Can you put on X or show the microphone?
Oh, is that better?
X.
There we go. So we'll have more community forums, more opportunities for people to, you know, either invite us in, or we'll have people to the hospital to discuss this. We're setting up a website as an organization that will help have Q and As on there, and we'll take questions from the community and put answers up as they come up, but try to do our best to listen to what we're hearing already and put together a nice Q and A so that people can get the information that they're looking for relatively easily on the, on the web. And that'll be up in just a few months as things progress. And then literally, you can call our office, we're more than happy to have, you know, one-on-one conversations with people if they have concerns or questions. We really want this to be transparent, and we want the community to feel as good about it as we do. So just, you know, be, be in touch, it's a two-way thing. We really appreciate your thoughtful questions.
So if Councilors, you have a question?
Call me.
Wilson?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your passion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Can we shut this off? Can we, um, turn it off?
All right, Councilors.
Can we just do this? It's going to be an off button. There we go.
Watch the clock. I think you have to hit it twice.
Yeah, you might have to, because of, more time. Maybe hold it for three seconds.
There we go.
There you go.
The fable, right.
All right, Councilors, is our consent agenda?
May I make a motion to waive the rules and accept the mayor's update and receive and file it in one? I don't think we did that.
No, I was going to make it up to the consent.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. No, I take that now. I was going to hold that off until afterward.
Okay.
So the consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the minutes for December 11th. There's one transfer, transfer number one for this year. It's $14,950 out of free cash to highway maintenance on trees, as we heard about. Same amount, that's to go to budget and finance. There are four communications. First communication is communication 122, mobility application, small cell utility petition. It's a refile from last year. That's to go to public utilities. Communication two of this year is LCA Motors for a motor vehicle dealer license. That's to go to license and permits. Communication three is UCAN Sports, it's a road race, 42918. There's actually two others later in the year. They have filed with us, that's to go to public safety. The insurance certificate is not part of the package. I did talk to them today. It is coming, they've applied for it as soon as I have it, we'll submit that. And the last communication, communication 126, the frigid fiber race has been removed at the request of Councilor Devlin to be taken up in the regular agenda. There's one first appointment, appointment number one, Annie Murrah, 17 Otis Place, Unit Four, to the Council on Aging until 5:31, 2023. That with the removal of communication 126 is the consent agenda for the seat.
Was it both of the council?
I'd like to make a motion to amend, to add planning and development to communication 122, if it's amenable to the other councilors. It's the mobility application for the cell, cell site. It's, since it's kind of half land and half public utilities, it may be beneficial for both committees to listen, hear, hear it.
I'll second that.
Would consent, is there a question? Hold it in favor?
Aye.
Close?
No.
One no.
All right. Now, approve the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, that was planning and development.
Yes, thank you.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as a?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Hold it in favor?
Aye.
Close? Now, I want to do a write-down. First, let's assess the mayor's update, if we can make a motion for one.
So moved.
Second?
And second, any objection?
Yes.
During that, hold it in favor?
Aye.
Close? Now, I'd like to take, out of order, the frigid fiber application, which management has been rotating back here, there's something you've asked. Mr. Porter.
I see Councilor Earls.
Councilor Earls.
I, Mr. Manning revealed who would be the beneficiary of this, and I didn't know this before, so I will need to recuse myself as my wife sits, is involved with both of the programs, so I'll accuse myself for this.
Thank you. Okay, that aside in mind. Is there a motion relative to the application for the frigid fiber? Senator Devlin?
Yes, I'd like to move to waive the rules and to approve this.
Second?
Move the second, waive the rules and approve this in one suit. Is there any discussion?
Sorry.
Mike, do it, go ahead, Senator Devlin.
I'm trying to keep it going. Take that back, because that's how she reads it. The Councilor's deed always starts in, I don't know if it goes that way, but.
Objection.
We can talk about the good of the order. This is not the first time, they've had 25 years of doing this, they've had no issues. The application is complete, they've got all the sign-offs, they've got two police details. The course is, 40% of it's on the rail trail, the first mile, the last mile, so it's, the course has been changed to make it less intrusive. Then it follows the typical Washington Street to Merrimack to Jefferson, because they're back on I, so it's a typical route that most of our road races, a lot of our road races take. Then it's, it was filed in time for our last meeting, so it's certainly not the fault of the applicant, and they, we only had one meeting in December. Money goes to good causes, especially.
The Councilor Earls' wife is on it and deserves our consideration today.
Other comments? During that.
Do you need an emergency preamble for this?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Did you put, what you were?
My ruling on that is, I think we could use one, the fact that it was already filed last December 11th and is now here under Rule 7C, I don't think there's one person in the room that would have a clearer understanding than I. Councilor Augment says no. Why don't we do it? Councilor Augment, don't take offense. Why not? Do you have an idea?
That the meet, that the race occurs before our next.
Exactly.
They have to have it.
Exactly. And so that would be?
I'll sponsor that.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
So emergency preamble, Councilor O'Brien, second, aye.
Councilor Z.
Going to roll call, Mr. President?
Yes.
Even though one doesn't have to. Councilor Devlin?
Yes.
Councilor Earls is recused. Councilor Augment?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you so much. Councilor Junta?
Yes.
Councilor Khan?
Yes.
Councilor O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilor Shan?
Yes.
Councilor Tontar?
Yes.
Councilor Vogel?
Yes.
Councilor Z?
Yes.
Councilor Connell?
Yes.
So that.
Emergency preamble hasn't been applied, so we're ready for our motion to act.
We have that.
Does everyone understand what we're going to... All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Someone will read the rules? You're done, Bob. Thank you.
Mr. President, could I clarify one thing? I said, I misspoke when I said there was no one in the room that had a clear understanding myself. I'd say there's probably no one in the room that has a less clear understanding. Okay. Next item, we're heading into...
Orders.
Orders. We have five orders. First order is order number one for this year. City Council accepts with gratitude a gift from Arnett Polymer LLC in the amount of $1,000 to be used for the upkeep of city docks in accordance with MGL 4453A submitted by Councilor Charles F. Tantar.
Motion to refer to budget and finance. Second? Second?
Discussion?
Sorry, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Budget finance.
Mr. President, just quickly, are we going to receive and file the mayor's update?
We did.
We did, we already?
Yeah.
Earlier. I thought we held off on it.
We did, yeah.
We did, and then we...
We did. I'm sorry. I missed that. Just to go to the staff for a second.
Thinking about something.
No, I think we did act on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's go to order number two.
Order number two is the City Council accepts with gratitude a gift from Aloco Sports, the amount of $500 in appreciation for the City Clipper Rail Trail for the Harborside Half Marathon 5K to be placed into the park's gifts and donations account. Committed, Councilor Tantar?
Motion to refer to budget and finance. Second.
And second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Orders number three.
Which is also a gift, which we accept with gratitude from the Newburyport Parks Conservancy in the amount of $9,600 for the care of Newburyport City Parks to be placed into the same park gifts and donation account. Councilor Tantar?
Motion to refer to budget and finance. Second.
Second.
Move the second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
I'm sorry, the second on that was?
Over here.
For the record. Thank you.
Don't rain on her for a second.
Order number four.
Order number four, submitted by Councilor Augerman, and it's relative to Fair Street. No parking on the Westley side of Fair Street within 15 minutes of its intersection with Essex Street, moving northly.
Let the record show, I'm out of batteries, but motion to refer to public state.
Second, is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And order number five.
Same, Councilor Augerman, Fruit Street this time. Restriction, no parking, Fruit Street, west side of the street, from a point 162 feet north of High Street to a point 171 feet north of High Street. No parking here to driveway.
Motion for a public state.
Second.
Move the second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have one ordinance, ordinance number one for this year. It is with respect to medical marijuana treatment centers. It is, in essence, the map, which the councilors, I believe, Sarah color-coded map on their desks. It is submitted by Councilor Heather L. Shan, and it's probably too long to read, Mr. President.
Is there a motion?
Motion to refer to planning and development?
Second.
Planning and development? Any discussion? Councilor Shan?
So this is just an update to the medical marijuana overlay district. It's an update to change the Malcolm Hoyt East-West boundary to include the properties on the eastern side of Malcolm Hoyt. Instead of you leaving Malcolm Hoyt as the boundary, so...
Further comment or discussion? All those in favor referring this to planning and development?
Second.
Aye. Sometimes I second this thing, so I'm getting confused here.
Mr. President, do we have a winner on that second?
I think I seconded it twice, so I will take it, yeah.
Don't see, he likes to second them.
I do, yeah. I enjoy it.
Okay, any access on that? Budget and finance?
Nothing, Mr. President.
General government?
Nothing.
Joint education?
Nothing to report.
License and permits?
Nothing to report tonight.
Navigations?
Nothing to report.
Planning and development?
Just a couple announcements. Again, I apologize, I don't have a mic, but there's a joint hearing that will be reopened. It'll be held by the Planning Board and the Committee on Planning and Development on January 17. This is to review ordinance 17 of last year, having to do with use variances. We opened that public hearing in December, and we're picking it up again in nine days. And then the other two, for the public's benefit, Order 15, Complete Streets Policy, and Ordinance 18 of last year, a zoning map correction. We'll take those out with the permission of the sponsors at our next full meeting on January 29. Thank you.
Public safety?
I'll report on what we've done.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Rules?
Nothing, nothing tonight.
Good of the order. I have, with your gentleman's run, announcements to make, and that we're receiving an email. We've had a couple of you concerned, voided, as we mentioned, the foot stops, the weather and the back of the city, the malls closed down. But we'll be receiving a email in the next 24 hours, asking you to select eight days of the current order, a couple of emerging, possibly major, one or two. Your preferred day, you can get together to have a retreat regarding rules, operating procedures, and norms. We expect this to be about a three-hour retreat, and I invite you all to attend after I get the information back from you. So today, we have a mediator, and we'll schedule that meeting, give you the time and place. There'll be food. Councilor Devlin?
How are we doing this with public meeting law? How are we about to do?
It's a good question. We have the, as long as we're not discussing the matter of a particular topic or policy, and these are the rules, the operating rules and procedures of our entity, we can have a retreat, and it will be open to the public to see what we're talking about and listen to what we say.
Are we going to post it? Just post it. So it's not going to be at your house?
No. Yeah, on the screen, of course.
I'll make it quick.
That's a good question. Thank you, Green Island. Any other questions? Any comments? We can do the order.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Stand in camera.
All right.